Hi June.
Oh, hi.
Look like Keith, June, whoever's Manning.
Yeah, I'm looking. I don't see everyone in here yet.
Okay, all right.
A few of you, yeah.
We'll give it a few minutes. My apologies for us running over. We'll get started as soon as the rest of the board is in here.
I'll let you know when I see everyone get in here.
Thank you.
June, I think we're good.
Do you see everyone? I don't see Dr. Pascarella, do you?
I'm here.
Oh, there he is. Okay, we're good.
Okay, thank you. The regular monthly board meeting of the Amber Garia School District Board of Directors on Wednesday, January 20th, 2020 is now called to order. Please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being recorded for district purposes. It is or may be published in part or in its entirety on the district's website without the express permission of meeting participants. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Angus.
Here.
Mr. Campalong.
Here.
Mrs. Curtis.
Here.
Mrs. Keigho.
Here.
Mrs. Maganello.
Mrs. Mueller, Mrs. Maganello is not able to attend this evening due to a death in her family.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Metz.
Here.
Ms. Pedego.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Fisher.
Here.
A present.
Thank you. Can I have the sunshine law, please?
The Board of School Directors held an executive session on Wednesday, January 20th to discuss personnel matters, matters subject to attorney-client privilege and other confidentiality laws, salary schedule and labor relations.
Thank you. Do we have any correspondence this evening?
No correspondence.
Thank you. I have a motion to accept or correct the minutes of the December 10th reorganization meeting, December 10th meet and discuss non-voting meeting, and December 18th board meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed. Thank you. I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report dated December 2020.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have no amendments, addendums to the agenda this evening. Recognition presentations. Dr. Pascarella?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me. On behalf of the administration, staff, students, and entire Amber Garia School District community, we want to take the time today to express our gratitude for our Board of Education, one of the hardest-working groups of volunteers in our community. Your direction, your leadership, and service to our community is essential to the continued success of the district. We want to know that you are appreciated every day, and tonight we honor you in regards to the Board of Education Appreciation Month. I'd like everyone, if you could, or give the board, excuse me, a round of applause with me. Thank you very much for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward to recognition of student athletes. I'm going to start with boys soccer. And June, Keith, I don't know if any of the student athletes are in attendance, if we're able to acknowledge them on the screen. If anybody is here, I did know that a few kids weren't able to make it, but starting with boys soccer 2A AL section, Will Horinko, Will Gruka, and Hayden Homan. Are any of the kids on here this evening?
I do see some of them on here if they want to turn on.
Anybody from that group I just mentioned on here?
I see Mr. and Mrs. Gruka on here on behalf of Will Gruka.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Gruka, if you want to turn your camera on?
Oh, sorry. I'm here.
I would just, on behalf of the board, first like to say that we are very proud of all of our student athletes, and we understand Will was actually working this evening, so he wasn't able to attend, but on behalf of the district and the school board members, we are very proud of our boys soccer team as well and our individuals that we're honoring this evening. So please pass forward to Will and the other two children as well. We're very, very, very proud, and Will is also on here for the 2A AL, WPIAL team. So hopefully, one day when we can see him, see him in person, love to shake his hand and congratulate him on having a double honor there.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Moving forward to girls soccer 2A AL section, Rachel Guthrie and Sophia Chicos are either on tonight?
I'm here, Sophia.
Hi, Sophia.
Hi.
On behalf of the district and the school board, we're very proud of you and Rachel for your.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Moving forward to football, Devon Gil-Martin, second-team running back, Austin Ludovici, second-team wide receiver and second-team linebacker, David Polacek, second-team offensive line, and second-team defensive line, Deshaun Harmon, second-team defensive back, Cedric Seymour, honorable mention as linebacker. Any of the student athletes on this evening?
I'm here.
Who's "I'm here"?
Devon.
Devon.
Hi, buddy.
I'm here, it's Austin.
Hi, Austin. Anybody else? Boys, on behalf of the district and the Board of School Directors, we're very proud of you for your accomplishments. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for attending this evening, too, boys. Okay, moving forward to cross-country top WPIAL finishers, Ryan Kerkanko, 34th place, Julia Bennett, 34th place. Either in attendance this evening?
I am.
Ryan?
Yeah, it's me.
Hi, Ryan. Congratulations, honey, on behalf of the district and the board.
Congratulations.
Julia is here as well? Hi, Julia. Thank you for attending this evening. We're very proud of you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward to girls volleyball, 3A Section 4 All-Stars, second-team Kiki Chambers, third-team Anasovich. Either of the girls here this evening? No? Okay, we'd like to congratulate the girls on behalf of the district and the Board of Directors. We're very proud of all of you.
Yes, congratulations, ladies.
Congratulations. You make us Bridger proud. Congratulations. Moving forward to the audit presentation. Peter?
Let me unmute myself. Yes, thank you very much. Thanks for putting that up on the screen. I'm just going to go through the, put a little summary together of some of the highlights in the audit report and just some of the items I wanted to point out to the board in regards to items within the report. So the report, right, is not finalized. It's in a draft form, but we expect no changes to it. Once we do get it finalized, we're waiting for a couple last items there. So the report itself, the first letter you see in the audit reports are independent opinion letter for the independent auditors report. So basically, it states that we prepared the audit or performed the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and generally accepted government auditing standards. It's done in accordance with government auditing standards because the district does expend over $750,000 in federal funds. The opinion's unmodified, meaning that there's no modifications to it, and it states that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The first statement I just want to go over is the balance sheet for the governmental funds. So looking at the balance sheet, your fund balance is broken into two categories, the non-spendable, which is at $319,000, and the unassigned of $1,086,000. So total fund balance in the general fund at the end of June of 2020 is $1,405,811. And just putting the unassigned in perspective, that is, as a percentage of your budgeted expenditures, it's 2.16%. So it's a little bit less than what the recommended number would be for a fund balance. The state and GFOA recommends between 8% to 10% if possible, so just to give you a perspective there. The other fund the district has is the Capital Project Fund. So in that fund, there's a committed fund balance of $2,847,189, which that's funds used for debt service and capital expenditures. And we'll look as we go down as to where you started and where you want that back. So the next segment will be your revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. The page number that there's references back to the audit report, if you want to go back at some point in time and look at the report itself. So for your general fund, your total revenues were $50,577,000, expenditures $50,386,000, and then some other financing uses and sources net of $296,000. So you're changing your fund balance from last year of 63019 to 63020 was a positive $487,713. And then when you compare that to what you anticipated in your budget, you basically, your budget for 1920 budgeted at a break-even point. So you anticipated that the revenues would equal the expenditures, and you wouldn't use any fund balance or increase your fund balance. Now, one thing to point out in your positive fund balance of $487,000 is the district did sell delinquent real estate taxes in 1920. So that money that was received for those, which was just a little over $2 million, is included in that positive number as a revenue. So without that one-time sale, the district would have been in a deficit of about $1,005,000 without that sale. Now, obviously, as you continue to sell those, you know, there'll be additional revenues, but the first year you sold them included all the back years also. So that number will not be as high, I would not think, going forward, because there just won't be as many delinquencies out there. So just wanted to point that out also. So in the financial statements, there's a report, there's a budget actual, so it shows you the original budget, the adjusted budget, the actual numbers, and then the variances between the adjusted budget and the actual. So your revenues are broken down into the four categories, local, state, federal, majority coming from local at 56%, and state just a little under 42%. Then your expenditures are broken into those categories of instruction, support, non-instructional. So as expected, instructional is the largest amount of expenditures, it's 60%, then support services, which would include guidance, you know, administration, health, the nursing department, maintenance, transportation, and those types of costs at 26%. Then the next largest number would be debt service of $5,774,000, which covers your principal and interest on the bonds and other outstanding debt that you have. As I mentioned earlier, your other fund is the Capital Project Fund. So that fund, the revenues mainly came from interest earnings of $57,000, capital expenditures of $805,000. That was mainly related to the paving projects that the district had going on during the year. And then the debt service, that fund has been, over the last number of years, been making the payments on the 2016 bonds, so that $556,000 is the principal and interest on those bonds. So the change in that fund balance in that fund was a negative $1,003,000, so you used $1,003,000 of your fund balance to cover the expenses during 1920. The other fund is the Food Service Fund. Just to take a look at that, the note that talks about excluding the net pension liability and OPEB liability, so this is part of the funds, we include net pension liability and OPEB liability. They're not items that are funded with revenues but are included in the expenses there. So that's why, just to give you a better perspective of what the change in net position was for those funds excluding that. So as you can see, for 63020, the net position decreased by $315,000. The prior year was a $120,000 decrease. You know, part of that decrease was a result of, obviously, not being in school for three months, so the revenues from the sale of food was down. Even though some of the federal numbers were up a little bit, it just didn't offset the cost there. So that's another fund you might want to keep an eye out to ensure that, you know, that over time, how much revenue the general fund's going to need to support that fund's operations, if it continues to show declines in net assets there. The next section of the financial statements would be the footnotes. There's about 45, 60 pages of footnotes. Just wanted to point out a couple of the items within the footnotes themselves. I know in prior years, we've talked about the net pension liability. This relates to the PISERS, the retirement program. So each school that's part of PISERS, the net pension liabilities, you're allocated a portion of that, and we report that on your government-wide statements. So it doesn't show up on your fund statements, but it does show up as a liability on your statement in net position. So the reason that your statement in net position says a negative number in there is because of these liabilities related to PISERS and OPEB. So your share of the liability for PISERS at the end of 63020 was $54,923,000. Also, the other liabilities is with the OPEB liability with PISERS, as part of the payment you make to PISERS, a portion of that is for retirees' health insurance. So anybody that's a member of PISERS and retires under the plan, they're awarded a portion of, they're given payments to cover their health insurance during retirement. So there's a liability associated with that. Your share of that liability is $2 million, just under $2.5 million. Then the other OPEB plan is the district plan, which would come under any contracts where you would provide any retirees any benefits after they retire. So that liability is very small, because your benefits, your contracts don't really provide a lot of benefits to retirees, so that's an actuarially determined number of $788,000. The other note, just to point out, is long-term debt. So you do have a number of general obligation bonds outstanding. The amount that was outstanding at the end of 63020 is the $64,575,000, and you had retired principal of $3,685,000 in 1920. You also have some capital leases payable that are outstanding that was related to technology purchases that were made over the years, the last number of years, so the outstanding amount on that at the end of the year is $349,000. The last section of the report is the single audit section. As I mentioned earlier, this is recard because the district does expend over $750,000 in federal funds. You can see your total federal expenditures during 1920 was $2,151,000. And as part of the audit requirements with federal funds, we're required to select a major fund to audit during the year and test over the controls over that program and also compliance. The results of that resulted in that there were no material weaknesses in internal control that were noted and no issues of non-compliance that were required to be reported over the program. And the program we selected was the nutrition cluster or the school lunch program. So that program includes the school lunch and the school breakfast program, and also the donated commodities. Just to give you a perspective, that program itself, the total expenditures of the year were $946,000, so that's the significant program of the school of the $2 million in federal funds. So that's a real quick summary of the financial statements. If there's any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer anybody's question now, or if there's any questions going forward, either Keith or Dr. Pascarella can get ahold of me, and also my contact information is there, too, if anybody has any questions going forward.
Dr. Pascarella, do you have any comments you need to share with the rest of the community?
The only thing I would say based upon this, and thank you, Peter, you could surely jump in at any given point. I think one key component is that you had mentioned, just to reiterate, is the selling of those delinquent taxes brought us in with a fund balance or added to our fund balance. However, you know, if you add that on to the fund balance, it was not to the level of what we had anticipated having to be able to be utilized, you know, for the current budget. I mean, would you agree with that statement?
Yes, that's accurate, because you had anticipated them basically breaking even, and without that $2 million coming in there, you actually would have had that deficit like I said earlier. So, and that's a one-time shot, too, for the majority of that money.
Well, I think that's important. That revenue is a one-time shot, and even with that revenue, part, I think, when we looked at some things, whether it was collection rates, which I did ask were adjusted going into the 2021 year, but those collection rates that were put in the 1920 budget, we did not meet those collection rates on real estate taxes. Would you say that's accurate?
Yeah, because your current real estate taxes did come in under budget by about $190,000, which, you know, is a negative number from what you anticipated there. So that is accurate, and that's basically where they came in at, because of what was budgeted compared to the actual collections were down.
There was a couple other spots. I mean, we won't highlight them all, but we can talk forward to specific questions. Some other areas where, you know, the anticipation of, you know, access dollars and those things to come in at a certain amount, but did not also created, whether that was on the revenue side, if you look at it from that perspective, causing some shortfalls to eat up that $2 million that we anticipated coming, you know, coming into having a fund balance to balance this year's budget. I bring that up simply because I think it's important to be transparent so that everybody understands that, you know, there were budgeting that, I guess that occurs, but, you know, in that 1920 budget, it's important to note that that $2 million that was anticipated, even with that, still created us only adding $480,000 instead of adding $2 million to the fund balance, therefore leaving us short in the current budget year to watch our expenditures, which we've been trying to do throughout the year. I think that's just basically what I wanted you to reiterate, and that, you know, we have to watch and make sure that we are going to look into what funds we do have throughout the rest of this year, and where we're going to make up some of that deficit into next year. Fair enough, I think.
Yeah, that's a pretty accurate depiction of where things were and what to look at going forward. Couple of those items you mentioned, yeah, when you look at the budget actually, you'll see the variances for access money, the real estate taxes, and some other refunds of prior year's expenditures that didn't materialize as expected in the budget. So whenever your budgeting is close with a, you know, a break-even, those variances obviously have a negative effect when they're negative. When revenues come in under budget or expenditures come in over budget, you know, that hurts the bottom line, and it's difficult to make that up the next year. So, you know, I think looking at where you are each month and making sure you're online to determine whether you need to make some adjustments going forward in the current year or even in your budget going to 2122 as to how you get back to a positive and positive change in fund balance there.
You want to review with the board one last thing. You know, the state's recommendation at a minimum, you know, with regards to having fund balance when you're operating a $50 million budget?
Yeah, basically, they're saying, basically, the recommendation between the state and also the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, is fund balance should be between 8% to 10%. So in your case of a $50 million budget, just using the easier 10% number, would be $5 million is what they would recommend you maintain, you know, throughout to avoid any, you know, if there are any glips in expenditures or in revenues that you can weather that storm. So you can see you're short of that by about a little under $4 million currently, if you're looking at it as a 63020.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
None from me.
Not at this time.
Not at this time.
At this time as well. Peter, thank you for your presentation this evening.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for putting that up. That makes it a lot easier whenever we can see what you're talking about. So I appreciate whoever did that in the scrolling was a good job, too. So thank you, and I think to thank Dr. Pascarella and Keith this year for the assistance they provided, especially with the challenges we had in getting in and out of there with the school being closed and all the other issues that go along with where we are now. So appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter.
All right, thanks. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
You as well. Okay, moving forward to public comment regarding agenda items only. In light of the state declared disaster emergency, the board has adopted modified public meeting and public comment processes consistent with the sunshine law. These modified rules have been published in a newspaper of general circulation and on the district's website. Public comment will only be taken in written formats via email in advance of the meeting. Public comments received in advance will be circulated to the board. All public comments regarding agenda items will be read during the meeting. All other comments will be summarized during the meeting. All comments must include the resident property owner's name and address. I do have a comment here from Stephanie Priori, Economy Borough. Her comment has been circulated to the board, and here are some of the points of concerns from Mrs. Priori. Clarity and transparency for the return to school plan for next week. What plan does the district have to ensure all classes will be staffed appropriately with meaningful lesson plans if staff quarantined? Substitute coverage for staff quarantining, vaccination plan for teachers and staff, Spending of Cares Act allocation, hopes that teacher furloughs are not a way to reduce operation costs for the upcoming school year, and large class sizes. And that is all the comment I have.
Thank you. I'll let Dr. Pascarella speak, and I believe Ms. Turnbull, our solicitor, also had some comments to add to the question, the situation. Go ahead, Dr. Pascarella.
Okay, thank you. To touch on a couple of the points, first of all, thank you for the comment there this evening. One of the, I guess, the concerns was in and around a plan for reopening. I mean, our committee worked diligently this summer and continued to review the procedures to try to implement a plan to keep folks as safe as possible. As we know, we will be opening up, per PD's recommendation and the board's vote, on the 25th for hybrid. Hybrid education for our elementary buildings and hybrid for our special education and English language learners in the other grade levels as well. We sent a series of blasts out. We will continue to do our best to adhere to the masking policies, social distancing policies, and the cleaning procedures that we have been implementing. And a special thanks to our committee as well, who meets regularly to try to review those things, and our entire staff, parents, and community for working together to keep everyone safe. Another comment I think I heard was about the Cares Act. We are waiting for further guidance on that. There's been probably, like many people, I've seen some articles or some general reviews that grant itself to the best of my knowledge, unless it's happened since, you know, we've been meeting for this meeting, has not actually been opened up with the exact specifics. So when that happens, you know, our team will be working, Mr. King and I, and the rest of the team will be working to see what allowable expenditures are to be transparent, as was requested in the statement. Obviously, we have to look at those funds as to what we need for our students in the district, but also if there is an opportunity at all to offset any of those current expenditures that we have, so that we can begin to try to build a fund balance back up for the school system, as our auditor just mentioned. So I'm not sure exactly each and every guideline. I'll feel more comfortable once that comes out officially and we can review that. But needless to say, we will be looking at both sustaining positions if necessary or sustaining curriculum needed for our educational purposes for our children in our community, and also looking at what guidelines present themselves that we would have to buy in addition in conjunction with, you know, the COVID-19 pandemic, et cetera. So, I mean, to be transparent, we'll have to see what we are allowed to spend the money on and work towards trying to not only keep our students safe and our staff safe, but look at the educational components that are there, and also look if there is a way to offset any current costs that are allowable underneath that funding. So again, to repeat myself, we can begin to build a fund balance back up that is much needed for the school system. So I think those were the couple of comments. You know, staffing and personnel, as far as that goes, we're in the budget process. We're looking at all different types of considerations, and a lot of those things are, you know, going to have to be looked at, and that is part of the budgeting process in personnel. And class sizes, you know, that's always a fair debate by everyone, and everyone has, you know, respectful opinions on that. And I know it's a challenge. We want to try to do our best to offer the best education that we can for our students while being mindful that, you know, we do have fiscal responsibilities and constraints as well. So it is a balance, and I surely appreciate the comments listed here tonight from the constituent parent. Thank you. So it's, it i- it is a balance, and I sure, surely appreciate, uh, the comments listed here tonight from the constituent parent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pasquarella. Ms. Turnbull?
Sure, and then relative to, um, just the limited issue of, um, of vaccines and vaccinations, uh, I believe that, uh, school staff has been surveyed, uh, relative to their interest. Dr. Pasquarella and the administration are working really hard with the IU to, um, to, to communicate those numbers and, and try to assist the IU, um, in whatever ways we, we can, um, to, to get some vac- some vaccines allocated, uh, to Amber Darius School District. Um, this is a collaborative effort across the county, uh, and, and schools. Right now, I think most school employees, uh, whether they are teachers or aides or, uh, maintenance, it, you know, they, that entire group, um, all of our employees will, um, coaches will, will potentially be, um, eligible at the point that, um, that one, uh, would be one is, is, is the classification, uh, that, that our group would be eligible to, to get the vaccine. The challenge, I think, and it's not a local one, it's a national one, the, is, is supply right now of, of vaccines. So, um, yesterday, the, you, you may have seen that the state revised the, the current group, which is A1, to include a larger class of people. Um, so at this point, um, if you are over the age of 65 or if you are, um, an individual between the ages of 16 and 64 with certain, um, health, identified health conditions, you may be, you may be eligible, uh, at this point to get a vaccine. I would point you to the Pennsylvania Department of Health, Health's website. There is a quiz there and some directions about, um, how, how you go about kind of trying to, to find out if there is any vaccine available in your area. That's outside of the district's, um, purview for the, for the most part. Uh, but we do, we do, you know, support any employee, uh, who, who wants to get vaccinated, and it's our intention to help, um, in those ways that we can, uh, certainly, uh, when we get to B1, um, or, or if that plan is, uh, revised at all, to get our, our employees kind of on, on the, on the books as well as, as potential candidates to receive the vaccine quickly.
Thank you, Ms. Turnbull. Okay, moving forward to committee reports. Education and Technology, Mrs. Maganel is not able to be here this evening, and there is nothing to report. Moving forward to finance and budget, Ms. Pedego?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. President, and, uh, I just wanted to say to the participants, I apologize for not being able to be on camera to, uh, this evening. I usually am for our, uh, public meetings. And so tonight, um, under my committee, I want to move for the adoption of items one through five as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Campalong. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campalong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keough?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving forward to building and grounds?
Uh, there are no voting items this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Angus. Moving forward to athletics, Mr. Campalong?
I apologize, nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Public Relations, Mr. Metz?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Steering and Rolls, Mrs. Keough?
I'd like to move for the adoption of items one through six.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Angus. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campalong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keough?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Legislative, Ms. Young?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Salary, schedule, and labor relations, Mrs. Curtis?
I'm moved for the adoption of items one and two.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Keough. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campalong?
Yes.
Ms. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Mrs. Keough?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Personnel, Mr. Angus?
Yes, this evening I'd move for the adoption for items one through five as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Roll call, please.
Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mr. Campalong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keough?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving forward to the Solicitors' report.
I had no action items for the board this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Dr. Pasquarella?
Yes, again, just want to thank the board, uh, for all of their work, not just this month, but every month. Um, a tireless job, and we really do appreciate your support in these difficult but important decisions and your work that you do for the students and parents and, and community. They appreciate it, so just another thank you for that. So, you know, thank you to all of the parents, students, and staff who have diligently through these difficult times to, uh, provide the most successful in education we possibly can for our students. It's, it's truly a community effort, and I know sometimes it can be difficult and frustrating, but, you know, we really appreciate your support. And, um, again, thanks to the staff, uh, as a whole, and the parents and the kids and the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the floor to adjourn.
So move.
I second.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Young, for seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you for attending this evening. Have a great night.
Good night.